Hi Nicole.
Thank you, Kwan.
You're welcome.
Hi Casey.
Hi.
Hello.
And Kwan, before we go live here, the board would like to hold public comments until the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so it won't, it won't take place until item G.
And Kwan, Cleo is saying that she doesn't have the link. Hopefully Wes has the link. Kwan, I'll text Wes to make sure he has the link.
I just texted him. He should have it, so, and I, and Cleo should have it, but I haven't heard back. It's not his panel member. Okay. I don't know if I can get Cleo in. I don't think, Lois, I don't think I can make Cleo a panelist. She's in as a, as a guest.
Okay.
And I don't think I can make her a panelist right now. Wes should have the panelist link that I sent everyone right before closed session.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have to make Cleo a panelist once we go into open session.
Okay, so I wonder, but Wes has the right link?
He should have it. I haven't heard back from him.
Kwan, I can't forward Cleo my link?
No, I just tried that.
Okay.
What about Grace? Does she have any problem logging in, or is she just still taking a break?
Somebody just, oh Wes is here now. And Grace, I haven't heard from her.
Grace just texted. She did not get an email for a panelist.
Gosh. Well, I think we'll just have to start the meeting and I will make her and Cleo a panelist once we start, because it won't let me make them a panelist now.
Okay.
I'm here.
Hi Wes.
Hello.
Are you letting Grace know?
I'm letting her know.
Okay.
So we're ready to start then?
Yes. Okay, three, two, one.
All right, thank you. First of all, appreciate everybody waiting for us. Closed session is now adjourned, and this meeting of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board of Education is hereby called to order. We will now commence with the flag salute. Do we have a flag?
We do. We get the flag up. There we go.
Stan, please join us.
Blue flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. There was no action taken during closed session. So we will now move on to item D, which is board meeting protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Sola. Session introduction, this meeting is being recorded. The meeting is open to the public and the meeting is being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comments, public comments are three minutes per agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item up to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make a public comment via Zoom teleconference, notify, notify the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom. Please include agenda item topic, or by using the raised hand feature in Zoom during the agenda item to be addressed. You will be identified by your display name in Zoom when called upon to speak. Email public comment. Public comments can be emailed to the superintendent 24 hours before the board meeting and will be posted to the Galt website with the agenda. We do have two public comments that are already posted to the website. Email public comment is limited to 450 words. Board vote and connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a rule called vote for action items. And should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move on to item E, which is reports, the superintendent's report, item number one.
Thank you. Well, January has been a difficult start to the 2022 year for school systems across our state, across our nations. But we do have some positive news to report, the local case rates in our local county, our district, the districts, and Sat County, and from reports from the public health department in Sacramento, that the cases are trending downward. Dr. Casiri, we've been meeting with her and her team every Tuesday really this all this month, and she feels her, her expertise, she feels that, or predicts that the current COVID-19 surge is behind us and that we will continue to trend downward. So that is positive. We are seeing a downward trend in our district as well. As of today, or as of this afternoon, we had 160 active cases of COVID-19. And during our peak in January, about five to seven days ago, we had up to 300. And so that is significantly lower. So we are, we're on the right track. I have in this report for you, I just highlighted some of the things, some of the difficulties that we faced this month with this pandemic, or with this outbreak. During our peak, we had approximately, at our height, 22% of our students absent daily. That has dropped down to about 14% right now. At our peak, we had about 15% of our staff absent daily, and we're down to about 10%. We've had principals, administrators, directors, teachers on special assignments studying in classrooms all month. We've had to close multiple preschool classrooms, and we've also had to close two elementary special, special education classrooms this month. We had to cancel a bus route the week of January 18th due to lack of staffing. We've canceled large student assemblies, and for most of our meetings, we have moved to Zoom. We've increased COVID-19 testing at all of our school locations, and we've also distributed at-home COVID-19 testing kits to our families. We've also provided N9, N95 face masks for all staff. And we also just today sent out a message to parents that we are going to start providing voluntarily N95 masks for students, starting at the middle school level tomorrow. Students will be able to take an N95 mask if they wish. We have ordered children, child-sized masks for the elementary schools. We're hoping to receive that within the next week to 10 days. And so I just, you know, I want to end on a report, a positive note. Again, things are getting better, and we're just hoping that it will continue this way. And I just want to thank all of our staff, everyone's hard work to keep school open this month. There has been days that it's been difficult. And we've just, we've stayed positive, we've stayed open, and we couldn't have done it without the support of all of our staff and our parents. Our parents that are continuing to follow the state and local and district health guidelines, you know, working with us when we have to call them and say, we need your child COVID tested to stay in school, come pick up a testing kit. Whether it's, we, we have a new decision forest, it's updated. I think we've gone through three additions or revisions of the county decision forest so far this month. And so everyone's been flexible, everyone has, has really stayed positive and helped kids stay in school. So I thank everybody for that. I have attached here for the board and for our community to see we are obviously Zoom. Again, for public meetings, we have an order from the health officer of the county of Sacramento directing all public meetings in the county to occur virtually, virtually until further notice. This was in effect as of January 6th. We did hear from Dr. Casiri that if the cases continue to trend downward like they are now, there's a possibility by mid-February, end of February, that this order might be lifted. It's just really, it's going to depend on the cases. So we will be Zoom until, until further notice for our public meetings. Any questions from the, from the board?
First, I just want to say my appreciation to everyone, you know, parents, teachers, students, staff. Everybody has just been all in on this, you know, and, and adapting to change on a daily basis has just been a huge challenge. You know, one of the things I think that, you know, moving forward is, is still a concern for us. I mean, obviously finding substitutes is one thing, and that's a challenge. I mean, and, you know, what you can, you know, in worst-case scenario, you put a principal in a classroom, but you can't really put a principal behind the wheel of a bus. You know, and I've noticed that we've had to cancel some routes. And, and I know that we've been trying to recruit new drivers. I know that's still been an ongoing basis, and then that there's a, there's a process, you know, of qualification that, you know, you can't just decide that you want to be a driver and hit the road next week. So I'm just curious, you know, how is that going, that process? I know there's a shortage of drivers throughout the state, and then we need to recruit. But how is our recruitment going in that area? Because that was, that's been a critical problem. And I think about it too, because like just the weather. I mean, I would hate to be a brand-new bus driver and, and hit, you know, early morning fog in Galt, you know, and, and on my first day on the job. So, you know, what, what are we doing to, to kind of, you know, help alleviate that problem? You know, because I think we've already talked about substitute teachers and stuff before. And, you know, again, just kudos to everybody for, for pitching in and doing their best. But the bus driver thing, that kind of, that kind of concerns me. What's, what's, how are we, how are we moving forward on that?
Yes, and our recruitment is, is going well. We had a transportation committee meeting with the high school as the district this afternoon. And we talked about some strategies, possibly looking at signing bonuses. We do all, they, the elementary district has some of that in place already, but we're going to look at what some surrounding districts are doing related to some incentives and some extra support, whether it's financial to get your credentials, your certificates that you need to drive a bus. You know, the reason, really the reason why we had to cancel the, the routes the week that we did was just because people weren't healthy, we, you know, too many staff members out. And so we were doing pretty well, we're covering routes really until January. But the bus drivers, recruiting bus drivers and keeping bus drivers has always been a concern, and it continues to be a concern. Nicole, in a report that she will give related to the governor's budget proposal, has some good information regarding some systems that might be put in place to help recruit bus drivers in California. So the, the governor is, is realizing that as well. But we are continuing to have those conversations with the high school as well to, to see what we can put in place to recruit and keep our bus drivers.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions or comment on that, on that report? No? All right, in that case, then we'll go ahead and move on to LCAP goal one, item one, the Kids Discover Educator of the Month, Kathy Lucasey.
Thank you, Tom. So we have a special recognition tonight. Kids Discover recognizes and honors amazing teachers in their community and their educator of the month for the month of October was Mrs. Lucasey. She is our lead Home Learning Academy teacher. Mrs. Lucasey was recognized for her effective implementation of the program with her students. So it's always exciting to bring to you any special recogn, congratulations to Kathy Lucasey.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. My, my son Carson had Mrs. Lucasey in the seventh grade. He absolutely loved that class he had with her. So she is an amazing teacher and does amazing things at that middle school.
Yes, yeah, it's nice to, to have her be recognized tonight. Thank you, Wes.
Yeah, she is amazing. A couple of my children have had her. You know, I remember the first time I walked into her math class and I saw all these plants growing, and it really sparks the imagination. So that's, that's some innovation that, you know, that we're, that, I think it's a, you know, it's a great resource for us to have in our middle school, so.
Absolutely.
She does an awesome job.
Congratulations to her.
Yeah.
Three of my students, or three of my children were her students, and she is an amazing teacher.
Thank you.
And this year, she's done some great things. She's actually our lead Home Learning Academy teacher this year. And, and she supported and really started that program for our students that are online learning right now. She's done a great job with that as well.
Yeah, I guess the only question from our perspective is what took so long to recognize her? Because we've known it all along.
We'll have to contact Kids Discover to find out, Tom.
All right, we'll do that. All right, anything else on that item? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, 2022, 23, school registration.
Thank you. Our registration for the 22, 23 school year opened on Tuesday, January 18th. And new this year, parents can register online. Now that we have Synergy, they, we have the capability of registering online. So parents, we have the link on our website. But parents can also, they can download or they can print the application from our website. You can also go into any of our school offices or district office and pick up hard copies of the application packet and return it to any of our schools as well. New this year as well, we'll talk a little bit more about this later on in the agenda. But the dates for enrollment and transitional kindergarten has changed this year. We will have more students that will be eligible to attend as a four-year-old in TK next year. By two months, you could be two months younger of a four-year-old this next school year, and you'll be able to attend TK. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later as well. But getting the word out to families that the registration is now open.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, item three then, we'll move on to dual-language immersion program. I saw that tweet this afternoon.
Yay, yes, so excited. And we brought to you last month the feasibility report for the dual immersion and the survey information. We surveyed our community, including parents and teachers. And so there's just been a lot of planning and momentum. We're working with our Kabe consultant to really iron out details. But implementing a dual-language immersion program really depends on, on parent participation. We need to have the students register before we launch a program such as the dual immersion program. So we have set, and the information went out to parents, and we'll be sending out another one, is our first DOI parent information nights will be next week. Tuesday in English, Thursday in Spanish. We are calling, personally calling every family who on the survey indicated they would be interested in attending an informational meeting. So we'll be making phone calls. And for the 48 to 58 families that are at the preschool that will be going into TK next year, we'll be making personal phone calls to them, because the most important part is to, to get that interest for our preschool and transitional kindergarten parents. Laura Marquez, our assistant principal at Valley Oaks, and Kuljit Nijjar, our preschool administrator, they are spearheading the informational nights. They will be presenting a PowerPoint. They will be using the information in the frequently asked questions that you have in your board packet. General questions, just to, so parents can understand a little bit more about dual immersion. There's a short video, and in your packet, you can also click on the link too for the short video. And then after it's over, it will all go on our district website. The meetings will be recorded, and there will be a Google interest form. Parents will be able to start completing interest forms if they're interested in enrolling in a, in the dual immersion program. What questions might you have? You have the FAQ, so, you know, to kind of give you an idea about what we want to hope to cover with parents. Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, you answered my question by just letting me know when, when you were going to have these informative sessions with the parents, because obviously if I was a parent, you know, having, you know, wanting to enroll, you know, one of my children in that program, I'd have a lot of questions. And so I think that's great that you're, you're setting up these Zoom sessions and, and giving them an opportunity to, to meet with you and really talk it over. And it sounds like you're reaching out to all the right people, because I was going to ask, you know, it's like if they have to register prior to kindergarten, you know, they're not necessarily parents within our district yet, you know, they're not normally receiving communications from us. But it sounds like you're, you're doing all the right outreach you need to, to, to see who's interested, to generate that interest, and then you're, you're providing the answers they need. I think that's, that sounds like we're going in the right direction there.
Personal outreach has been so important. That's why we're making phone calls on top of the blackboard. But we were a little surprised to, when we looked at birth dates, to realize, you know, that 58, 58 students already at Fair Sight will be, you know, in transitional kinder next year. And then on top of our preschoolers who will continue in the preschool program. So those are the families we really need to connect with first. We also, hopefully, later in February, end of February, we'll start having in-person meetings as well.
Excellent.
Wait and see.
Anybody else? Okay, next we'll move on to LCAP goal two, goal two then, and that is item number one. There is food and nutrition services. So is Nick here tonight to present?
He is here this evening. He should be showing up on your panel list in just a moment.
Panelist.
All right, sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening, Nick.
Yeah, good evening, good evening, Superintendent Yon and board members. Sorry about that. I'm, first time I'm doing this with the sharing the screen and everything. So please forgive me if I, a little lag on it. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right, so thank you for asking me here tonight to have a little presentation about my department, food nutrition. This is the school year 21, 22. There we go. So this year, we're still under the seamless summer option. We did collect alternate income forms for everybody to keep our, from all the students, to keep our LCAP numbers up and get our free reduced meal percentages for the year. All meals are no cost under, and will, I'm sorry, all meals for next year will be no cost. California is doing the first state universal meal program. And so we're being required to either apply for community eligibility provision or provision two for all our sites, and then we'll get reimbursed for free rate for all of our students. So in April, I'll be doing that, and we'll see which programs we go with. Right now, our attendance is a little down, so our meals are down. But earlier this year, in about November, we were averaging 663 breakfasts a day throughout all the district, about 2,200 or 2,500 lunches, and about 356 suppers. So that's pretty average. Other than our suppers, pre-COVID supper was about 700, but the rest is pretty much back to where we were serving pre-COVID. We are serving breakfast many ways, in the multipurpose room students are coming through, in the classroom. Just whichever way we can get it served, whoever needs it. Lunch, we're serving it earlier in the multipurpose room. It's a traditional style, kids are coming up. We're not having our salad bars yet, just because of COVID concerns and everybody touching things. So we're still serving all the food and items on the trays. We are offering lunch buddies for students that are bringing meals from home. It's focused on students that sometimes we see with just chips or Gatorade. So we give them a fruit, a vegetable, milk, offer them a sandwich. That way it kind of offsets, maybe they didn't make, they packed their lunch, or they only had some fruit and vegetables, and we have some extra things to offer them. Supper, we're serving in the multipurpose room, and students are coming in as before, and some of them are grabbing and going, and we're, we're still doing supper. It's going good. And some of them are grabbing and going and we're still doing supper. It's going good. We've had our challenges COVID-related. We've had lots of challenges with paper products, trays are amazingly hard to find, cutlery, forks, sporks, any kind of packaging, you know, you're scrambling multiple places to get it. Oddly enough, there's been a lot of shortages on buns. There's often that we haven't had, been able to serve our chicken sandwich or hamburger or something because we just couldn't get any buns in. We had a big shortage on fries for a while, all kinds of potato products. And right now still we're struggling with tortilla chips, tortilla chips, tortilla shells. For whatever reason, they are hard to get to the schools. You know, we'll order them way in advance and then they're just not coming. We've even had challenges with fresh produce where we're not getting as many things pre-cut. Like the kids like the packages of apples pre-cut, things like that, but we still have lots of fresh produce for them. And then of course, we've had some staffing issues. We've had our challenges with the COVID running through all the kitchens and we have some retirees. We have some open positions that we haven't been able to fill yet and we're working on that. We do have one sub available daily and we have her working every day. A long hour, short hour. She's been there since last year, all summer. She's a good, we got one good sub. So if you guys know anybody that wants to sub, get them in, have them apply. We'll put them work today. These are two of our people that retired, Joellen Bandy. She's retiring February 4th. She was hired in 1992. And it's kind of funny is I was looking at this and 1992 was when I started with school food service. But I still got about 10 years to go yet. And then we've got Robin Coker, who was hired in 97 and she retired a few months ago. And so we're, we're doing the shuffle because now we're, we're filling for them and then we're getting ready to fill. And we have to fill the people's jobs that took their spots. I just want to keep, put a shout out to my food nutrition staff. They have been making meals happen. We bought in creative on days, like I said, when we didn't get hamburger buns or tortilla chips. We figure out, maybe we do a taco tortilla or we do something on noodles or something. We make it happen, but it's been important this year. We've been doing a special cookie a month. We've been trying to do a cookie. We've had some challenges with getting our, our little sprinkles or whatever. But one of the things we did was for Halloween, the one-eyed and two-eyed monster cookies. They went over well. Kids loved them and it was a hit. We this year have been partnered with the Sacramento Food Bank. They have been through a grant, giving us grocery boxes. They come in the third and fourth week of each month. We began distributing them at Greer and now we've added Valley Oaks. It's open to all the community and when the families come up, all I need to ask them is how many households are picking up for and how many family members? And they can have one, two or three boxes, whatever they need. It has shelf table items, milk, cereal items, all kinds of things in it. They are changing to a spring box and that's happening within this week. So that's going well and it originally was going to continue until just through December. But the grant has been extended and it'll go throughout the rest of the school year. And then I guess we'll see if there's more grant going on or how that goes. We are staying forward focused in our department. We're always looking for new items. We're meeting today with me, some of the staff to discuss what we should keep on the menu next year, what new items we should go, what should we drop? Like I said, we have some retirees, so we're doing a lot of restructuring with the site teams, getting new leadership, getting a lot of excitement within our department. And of course, we're staying smiling under our mask and happy, happy, happy to be serving our customers in person and back seeing the kids come in, having that interpersonal relationship with them, just to, to say good morning to them and to say hi and hear their conversations and just see their face and see them happy that we serve spaghetti. A lot of them are just happy when we serve spaghetti or a taco. So that's it. Do you have any questions or comments that I could answer for you?
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I make comment. I really, you know, it's excellent that we have two ladies that are retiring that have been in this district for a really long time and I think they need to be recognized for their length of service. That's Robin Coker and Joellen Bandy.
Yes.
So that's great that we had employees work that long in this district.
Yeah, and they were, worked a lot of different places, well-known and well-liked. And they knew a wealth of experience and recipes that I got to make sure I get a hold of and, and just cooking techniques and they're like the elders that you want to learn from before they leave. You don't want to lose those recipes.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Nick. You folks have been doing an amazing job for, for a long time now. You guys have adapted to so many different changes and you've always been dedicated to delivering, you know, the best product for our kids. And you innovate, you constantly adapt and change, and it's just amazing the work that you guys do. And I agree with Wes, you know, it's amazing that we've had two workers that have stuck with us that long. And that says a lot about food service. It says a lot about this district when, when we have employees that, that stick around. So, you know, they will be, you know, they will be sadly missed, I'm sure.
Oh yes. Yes. Well, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. They will move on to other reports then, and that would be item one, School Services of California Governor's Budget Workshop for 2022, 23. What's the good news?
I got lots of good news. I'm going to share my screen and be kind because this is my first time doing this. So I'm going to try. Can you, can you see it?
Yes, we can see your screen.
Oh yeah, okay. And so I think I just used the arrow down. Okay, yeah, okay. I think I got it. All right. So we just pulled a couple of slides from their PowerPoint and presentation is quite lengthy. Does that look okay? Everybody can see and it looks fine? Okay, good. So just to touch on a few things for the state budget and the economy. The governor is assuming continued economic growth in California. His proposal creates a surplus for 2223. COVID still has great levels of uncertainty. And so inflation is becoming a major concern. I don't know if any of you have heard about potential, you know, rate hikes and things like that in the news. So it's kind of a concern. The governor also assumes that his big three taxes are going to increase over 2122 for next year. A large part of 95% of the revenue is made up of the big three taxes, which is, you know, personal taxes and sales tax, things like that. This is the actual budget for the whole state of California. And you'll notice that total available resources did decrease from, are expected to decrease for 2223.
Can you pause for a second? We're still looking at the opening slide.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. So it's not, I don't know, you may be flipping through it, but we're not, we're not getting that. That's, that's, that's a Zoom thing.
Resume share somehow it paused.
Why has it projected if that's easier? She's prepared to project it. That would help Nicole.
Yeah, Nicole, if you would like to stop sharing, I'll go ahead and share for you.
Okay.
I know it's hard to talk and, and do that on Zoom, for me at least.
Okay, yeah. Am I off now?
Yes. So can you see the screen now?
We, we can see it, but it's not, I don't think it's in the right view.
Yeah. So go to, I had to go to display setting and say swap presenter view.
There we go. Does that work now?
Yeah, it works for me.
So if you try to move slides quite, does it, does, do you guys see it?
Yes.
So when, go to the next one, does it change for you guys? Does that change?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. I just didn't want you to go all the way through.
Keep going and going.
We're just looking at the first page.
See, you know.
This is much better. Okay.
Um, so this one, I talked about the, the taxes. This was the slide for the big three taxes that most of our state revenue is made up of. So we can go to the next slide quite. So this is the state budget. And so resources are expected to decrease for next year. And that's the total resources available line, the 219 and the 233. While expenditures are expected to increase 1.47, that's the 213 and the 210 for the total expenditures. Next slide. And we can, so we'll go to the next one. This was just kind of a titling slide. So Proposition 98 is expected to reach 102 billion this year, which is 8.3 billion over last year's budget. There was also some additional adjustments to the last two years for some revenue increases as well. Our next slide. I do want to point out, and that's why I put it in red, that most of the new proposition money, Proposition 98 money is earmarked for specific categorical programs and services, not as much core. And you can see that in the graph under the K-12 section. The blue is the categorical funding. And so that's just something to point out that categoricals are making their way back where they were taken away when LCFF came and they rolled everything in. And so just something to think about when things are categorically, you know, they're for very specific things, not so much. Gives us the freedom to spend it on what we may need it for. Next slide. This is just to make a point that because the state has to, it triggers the state to make a reserve into the rainy day fund for next year. When they do that, what it does is it triggers a cap of 10% on district reserves, unrestricted reserves. And so it requires districts to start committing funds as opposed to what we usually do, which is assigned and unassigned. And so I just wanted to point that out. And so we'll see how that goes through May revision and the actual adopted budget. Next slide. This is just more on the reserve cap. And so I don't have anything additional to say. It just shows you the 10% cap on, on districts. So you can move to the next slide quite. Thank you. And so one thing I do want to point out is that one thing that school services and capital advisors have noted is that the administration finalized their economic forecast in November. And so what that means is that the impacts from Omicron and the recent like volatility in the stock market haven't, aren't included per se in their projections. And so for that reason, capital advisors is, is kind of just cautioning that we could see bigger changes between January's budget, May revise, and what's actually adopted in June than we have in the past. Usually sometimes there's not a lot of movement and not a lot of changes between all of the proposals from the governor and what gets adopted. And so they're, they're just telling us to keep our eye out. Now we may see changes in May revision from now. So on this one also, I'm sorry. Just pointing out that there's a 5.33% COLA for this year. You guys have the dartboard in your package as well to look over. And we're going to go over some other rates, other rates as well. Sorry, quiet. You can go now. So this just shows you the LCFF funding from the base grant level. So when you add the 5.33 COLA, which is around 400 and something for, for each of our grade levels. And then there's obviously an increase for COLA to the grade span adjustments for K through three. And then just to note that supplemental and concentration add-ons to the base grant are LEA specific. And so once we do our LCFF for second interim, we'll have our total increase for that. Next slide is just a title, so we can go to the next one. So this is a little snippet of the dartboard. It shows you the projected COLA. So once again, it's a larger COLA for next year, 5.33. And then the two out years is the 3.61 and the 3.64. The one thing that school services did point out is that although COLA levels are higher, it's, it's really, it's simply because of the inflation of costs. And so it really doesn't provide an increase in real spending capacity because your costs have gone up as well. Next slide. So I've talked before at first interim about the ADA cliff. This is just a nice visual that kind of shows you, you started with your 1920 ADA, then 2021 was funded on 1920. 2122 is really funded on 1920 because you have both harmless. And it just kind of shows you that cliff where if they don't do something to help us mitigate the loss of ADA through COVID that in 2223, we have the potential to be funded on 2122 ADA or 2223. And so you're going to see that decline in ADA from what you've been being funded on for the last couple of years. My next slide. So what the legislature, what the governor has proposed, and it's interesting, we'll see. There's a lot of ideas out there about how to help us mitigate that. And so the governor's proposal is usually a school district is funded on the greater of prior or current year ADA. And so you can see in this slide that he, what he's proposing is three. He's proposing the greater of current year, prior year, or the average of the last three years. And so you can see current law would fund, say this sample district at 9,500 ADA. The governor's proposal would allow them to get 9,833. So it's helping mitigate the ADA cliff. So we'll see what actually gets adopted by the, you know, by the legislature. But it would definitely help us if something like this were to be adopted to mitigate the loss of ADA. And next slide. Here's some more good news. So special education is yet getting another, getting COLA. It's a big COLA. And so you can see that we've, we've really gained some traction on our general AB602 funding for special ed since 1920. We started off at 545, they upped it to 625 and 715. So for 2223, it'll be $820 per ADA for the, for AB602. So they continue to, to benefit from the COLAs and it's just, it's, it's been a big help coming from a large county. It was, it was a huge, a huge thing to get that type of increase. And I can only imagine in a small district, the help that it brings as well. Next slide. We're just going to go through a couple of slides of just some categorical funding, as I talked about in the beginning, that the governor is proposing. So we talked about expanded learning at the last board meeting and how, so this is just, he's got ongoing funding now. So he's doing 4.4 billion of ongoing funding for expanded learning. And that's the before and after school enrichment that we discussed at first interim. So now it's, it's, you know, it's ongoing. He's investing in it and we'll be able to, you know, build a, a more robust program in our district. And you'll hear more about that too as well, next board meeting. The next slide. He's also investing in childcare and preschool. He's putting additional Prop 98 money into state preschool because of the requirement to serve at least 10% of students with disabilities and help with dual language learners. Next slide. Nick already touched on this about universal meals. And so he's putting money, additional Prop 98 money towards subsidizing LEAs for providing meals to all students. There's also, this year, there was some of the one-time money to upgrade kitchen infrastructure and equipment. He's also proposing that for next year too. He's also proposing that for next year too, and so that's a big help to get kitchens ramped up. Especially, you know, new, more kids TK and things like that, so that was nice to see. Next slide. This is, um, something Lois touched on earlier, and so two things for transportation. He's proposing additional grants for electric buses, as you know from, I'm sorry, as you know from, um, Carrie's presentation, I think last board meeting or the board meeting before, um. Sorry, I have a hair. Um, the last board meeting before, that we've ordered two electric buses, they're just delayed, um, incoming due COVID like everything else. So this grant, um, is provided for more electric buses, and so we'll see, they're focusing on small and rural first and, and ones that have high unduplicated counts. So we'll see where we land in, in that arena. And then also the last bullet on the slide does talk about the governor's proposal to form a work group to help streamline the process of training and licensing new school bus drivers, and that's what Lois was saying about him trying to provide some relief or some, some, um, you know, streamlining of the red tape, I guess, on being, trying to be a bus driver. All right, next slide. So this is just to touch on that, there's still bond money in the school facility program, but there's not enough to fund the applications that they already have. And so he's proposing adding additional general fund money to the, our, um, to the bond money they already have, so that they can fund, pretty much it would, it would fund um, almost most of the applications they already have. And we have a few applications in, and so it would only, um, help, you know, be beneficial to us if, uh, this passed and we got some of our projects approved. Next slide is just a title, and then you can go to the next one. So just to touch on a few, um, things expense-wise, those were a lot of the new revenues that we're getting. So we've touched on this before, that, uh, both Calpers and Calsters rates are increasing. And so for Calpers, it's going from the twenty-two point nine one this year to the twenty-six point one next year, which is a three point one nine increase for us. Um, and so we'll be paying additional three point one nine next year for all of our employees and pers. Next slide. Stirs as well is going up, um, current year is sixteen point nine two percent. Next year will be nineteen point one percent. That's a two point one eight percent increase. The governor is not for, um, not proposing any sort of relief for us. It's like he did in the past where he would make the contribution and that would lower ours, and he's not proposing that in his proposal this time. Next slide. You'll hear about this later. I just wanted to touch on a few slides. So we talked about universal TK. This is just kind of, um, the timeline of each year, they're going to give you a couple more months of eligible students. Next slide. This just showed the classroom staffing, that there's a maximum of twelve students and, um, and it just kind of talked about the class enrollment, and so you'll be hearing about TK, you know, for the next couple of months and getting a lot of information on that. Uh, next slide. Good news is, we have a planning and implementation grant that we've received. Ours is about a hundred and sixty thousand, and it's to, um, help with different things in implementing your TK program from recruiting and hiring costs, materials and supplies, just kind of to help you ramp up for those types of things. Next slide. The next two slides are just, just touch on the LCAP timeline, so LCAP is, um, is, is back, is back on, and it's, uh, you know, we had twenty twenty-one LCP. We had twenty-one, twenty-two LCAP again. We'll be starting our twenty-two, twenty-three LCAP, um, uh, planning pretty soon here. And so this just kind of, uh, gave an overview of that. Uh, next slide. This has a lot of information, and so all I really wanted to point out is that the twenty-one, twenty-two annual update supplement is gonna be presented next, um, board meeting, but it's not gonna be approved. It's still gonna be part of the normal approval process with the twenty-two, twenty-three LCAP in June. But they're requiring us to present this special supplement they designed to you next month. Uh, next slide. This is the last slide, and this is just, um, an illustration of the new certificated, well, it's not new for certificated, but the new layoff timelines. What, um, AB four thirty-eight did was it streamlined classified layoff timelines and requirements to mirror certificated. And so the biggest change for that is just classified staff are, are notified by March fifteenth, just like certificated are, and classified staff are entitled to hearing now. This is, um, different. So those are just the main, the main points, um, on that. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. First one being, on this one page, the SSC School District and Charter School Finance Projection Dartboard. Uh, it has a state minimum reserve requirement. I was always under the assumption that all the schools had to have a three percent reserve minimum, but this sheet has it differently, has it by ADA.
Which slider, which slide are you looking at, Wes? Which number?
That's the page in the.
Oh, the dartboard, oh, okay.
Yeah, the dartboard.
Let me get to that real quick. I got that right here. Okay, minimum reserve. Oh, well, um, it depends on your, it, it does, it depends on your ADA, and so, so ours, ours based on our ADA is the three percent.
Yes, I, I'm just working, I, I always thought it was, didn't matter.
Like everyone?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's based on your ADA.
Okay. All right, um, the other one is, uh, I know it's like a preliminary budget, but, um, uh, right now, how is it looking for, like, our one-time funding? That we'll get for, for our district? Is there any idea to know that yet?
For, for which?
Always get a lot of one-time fundings. Do we have an idea of what that's gonna be yet, or, or do we still have to wait until the final?
Um, well, you, like, as far as, you mean, like, other than the COVID one time, talking about categoricals and stuff? Yeah, so, um, as far as how much we'll get, yes, we will have to wait, um, on that type of thing. We have one time, like, like the EL, you know, the yellow P is now gonna be ongoing, but you're not gonna, you know, you normally don't know your allocations until later on. Basically, when you build your budget, you're using a lot of prior year information until you get further along in the year, and you start getting, you know, allocations and things like that. LCFF is probably one of the, one of the few, and because it's our meat and potatoes, it's one of the few where you can actually do some sort of robust projection early. And then a lot of the other ones come later, and we just kind of plan off of what we got the prior year.
Okay, I think that's pretty much it. Uh, my other question was answered in your slides was about how much we would be getting per, per student, but it, it was answered in the slides back there, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just think it was interesting, your point that the more categoricals we have, the less control we actually have under LCFF. It seems like we're just coming full circle. I mean, the whole point of LCFF was to get away from categoricals, from programmatic spending, and, and, and give low, you know, give local control, the, you know, the ability to, you know, to target what your, what your most critical needs are. And now it's like the state is going, yeah, here's your money, but this is what you gotta spend it on. That's not always helpful for districts. I, I don't understand why, why we're gravitating away from that. The other thing that deeply concerns me is why neither the governor nor within the legislature, there's, there's, there's not more effort to, to, to try and, uh, buy down those employer, uh, contributions. That's, that's significant. And, and it continues to grow every year. And, you know, what the governor did two years ago, I think it was, is, you know, he, he bought it down a percentage. I mean, a fraction of a percentage, I'm sorry. So it's not, you know, it's not enough help, and there's just not enough conversation coming out of Sacramento to really address that issue is, is still concerning. So I'm just surprised that he doesn't, uh, you know, he can, he just completely avoids that in his, in his budget. There's a lot of good news in there. They're, like you said, there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of money and opportunities that come with it. That's always great. Um, it's great to see that there, you know, the increases in special education especially, I mean, I've been looking at, you know, those kind of numbers for years. And, and those increases are much, much needed, long overdue. Glad to see that they're doing that. But there's definitely other areas where, you know, it needs some focus too.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on that budget?
No, Mr. Silva, you bring up a good point. I know, we're happy to see a five percent COLA, but will that COLA even cover the cost of pers and stirs increases? So I mean, we have to really monitor that.
Yeah, that's a challenge. That's a challenge. So we'll see, you know, obviously between now and June, there's much wrangling to be, to be done. So what we actually end up with is, is always, you know, always much more important. Um, so, so maybe there will be some, some traction within the, the legislature themselves to, to try and address some of those issues for us. Okay, well, thank you very much for the report. If nobody else has any other questions. Uh, we'll just move on to the last item under reports, which of course is the, the Williams Uniform Complaint Process Quarter Two Report.
And we are reporting that we have no complaints.
Excellent. All right, then we'll move on to Item F, which is Routine Matters, New Business. And that will be Item two one, two point two six four, Approval of the Consent Calendar. What do you want to tell us about the consent calendar? There, I understand there's, uh, some, some, there's, there's some more retirements that we need to talk about tonight.
Yes, yes, there are. We've got some big retirements here. A couple we've mentioned that I want to mention again. Joellen Bandy retirement after twenty, twenty-nine years with our district. Principal Donna Gill retirement after fifteen years with our district. Principal Ron Raymer retirement after thirty years with our district. And Janet Munoz is retiring after twenty-three years with our district, and so we do have. You add all that up, I don't know, is it almost a hundred? Is it over a hundred?
It's close to a century, isn't it?
It is, and so just thank you, thank you for your, your contributions to education, to our district. It just, it, it really says a lot when you see how long some people stay in this district. And so we will, we will miss all of you, appreciate you. Our principals that are retiring, they are not leaving us until the end of the school year. Um, their retirement is not, not into effect until June of twenty, uh, June twenty-eighth, and so, um, we'll talk a little bit more about probably closer to the end of the year with a recognition for those principals. But yeah, everybody, thank you, Joellen, Janet Munoz, Donna Gill, Ron Raymer. Hundred years in our district.
Just a solid foundation to the education that's provided for our students. And, yeah, one of the things, when I get out and about and I, you know, and I talk to folks at, at some of our schools, like, you know, the thing that always amazes me is I have talked to teachers who said that, you know, that Mr. Raymer was their teacher at some point in elementary school. And so, you know, that's, that's what's amazing about this district. Yeah, um, it is just the fact that, that we've had great teachers and administrators that have fostered great teachers. And so it just, it just continues. And so, but it's always amazing when I meet someone that, you know, that tells me that, that Mr. Raymer was, uh, was one of their teachers, you know, it's, it's just, it says a lot, a lot about him and a lot about our district.
Yes.
Any other comments, Race?
Uh, I was gonna say Donna Gill was one of my high school principals.
See, there you go, small town, huh? But that's what's amazing about this town and this district, right, is people stay. They stay for a long time and they do good things, and it's just, you know, it's, it's wonderful to see that. I don't, I don't think that's really the norm throughout the state, especially probably in the bigger districts. And I think it's really easy in a big district to, to never, you know, to never see that connectivity. So that's, that's very fortunate for us. It's probably even part of the big draw to this town. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? All right, if not, then do I have a motion to approve Item two one, two point two six four, the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve Item number two one, two, two six four, seconded by Wesley Cagle, Tom Silva.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, then we'll move on to, as, as no items were removed from the consent calendar, we'll bypass two one, two point two six five and move on to Item two one, two point two six six. And that is Board Consideration of Approval of Stipulated Expulsion Case Number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash one Recommendation.
Need a, a recommendation to approve the.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
I understand we needed a motion. I just didn't know if there was, I mean, I understand it's a confidential matter. I didn't know if there was any explanation that went along with the, the item. That's, sorry for the silence. But, uh, okay, so I just need a motion to approve it at this point then, or why need to make a motion on it? All right, then, so, uh, again, then I'll make a motion to approve Item two one, two point two six six. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve Item number two one, two, two six six, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Grace Malson.
Aye.
Wesley Cagle.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Item two one, two point two six seven, Board Consideration of Approval of Resolution Number Nine, Supporting Personal Belief Exemptions Related to the COVID-nineteen School Vaccine Mandates. I think that's very timely this week, so.
Yes, thank you. We bring to the board tonight, tonight to discuss and potentially approve Resolution Nine related to personal belief exemptions for students if the COVID-nineteen vaccine were mandated under Health and Safety Code. This week, Senator Richard Pan introduced a bill that would add the COVID-nineteen vaccine to the list of required vaccines for students to enroll in school. Senator Pan's bill would not permit a personal or religious exemption from the COVID-nineteen vaccine requirement. It would only allow for medical exemptions and would take effect January first, twenty twenty-three. The resolution presented to the board for discussion tonight states the district supports individual and parental requests for informed consent and strongly encourages the state to maintain medical and personal belief exemptions regarding the COVID-nineteen vaccination. The resolution also directs the superintendent to comply with all current and future COVID-nineteen vaccine mandates. The resolution is attached, and the letter that we sent to state and local officials back, I believe, this was October, yes, October, uh, November eighth, that we sent to our representatives is attached as well. So if the board has any questions or open for discussion about this resolution, supporting personal belief.
I know how I feel, but I'm just curious what the rest of the board has to say about, uh, about this resolution.
Well, I know that we have spoken about it before, but, um, aren't other vaccines, don't they have the personal belief exemption, or is?
No, those were taken away.
Those were taken away.
So the ten that are currently mandated, the, uh, the ability to have a personal exemption was eliminated in, I want to say, was it twenty seventeen? Is that about right? So your only option is a medical exemption, and those are becoming exceedingly rare. So that's, that's part of the challenge of, of removing the personal choice or the religious exemption, is the fact that you, 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 you you really almost have no choice. You have to find a physician that's willing to, to, uh, to verify it, um, and they get scrutinized really closely. So it's, um, it's becoming pretty much a, a, a hundred percent or not at all. I know myself, you know, I saw there was an interview with Senator Pan yesterday, I think it was, and you know, he yesterday, I think it was, and you know, he made the comment that, you know, well, you have a choice, you know, you can choose not to vaccinate. But then he says, but then there's consequences and the consequences are, you know, your kids won't be able to attend school. To me, that's not a choice, you know, that's an ultimatum. And and I and I just don't really feel that that's the kind of leadership that that we deserve from Sacramento. You know, I think it's great that, you know, he believes he has the right to believe what he believes and 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 advocate for that, but but making it a law and making it absolute is something that I don't think is respectful of the rights of the parents in this district, in this community, when it when it comes to being able to make those choices. You know, if you believe so strongly in in what this vaccine can do, then then then, you know, your job is to argue it, to to advocate. But when you pass a law, it becomes an ultimatum, and that's that's not a choice. And and I think that's, you know, for me, anyway, that's really disrespectful of the parents. And I know all the parents in this district have struggled with this. This is a very difficult decision, no matter how you look at it. And I respect all the parents who have to make those difficult choices. We're parents. We've had we've had to weigh these decisions. And so, you know, for us to just be told, well, it's not even your decision to make. I don't know. To me, I guess it's just not respectful of our rights as parents. I think we work too hard as parents to make the best choices and the best decisions for our kids to have somebody in Sacramento just say, you know, it's it's not your choice. So I don't know. Anyway, that's well, now you know how I feel about that situation. So what are the rest of you think about this? I'm not, you know, I know you all feel strongly about this, too.
Well, and and I tend to, you know, agree with you, Tom, you know, we all know what's best for our family and our children. But this, you know, on the flip side of that, if we're going to it has to, you know, either be all or none. So either all the vaccines that are mandated right now without that they're allowed to do personal beliefs anymore, either all of them, you can do personal beliefs, or all of them you can't. Well, you can't trade, pick and choose.
Well, but the decision on the other ones has already been made. And I think adding this one into that group. To me, this vaccine is different because you know, as we've seen over the past, you know, couple months or especially the past few weeks, you can be vaccinated and still get COVID. You can be vaccinated and still pass COVID. So if it's for your own protection and it's not protecting, you know, your neighbor, if you're vaccinated, it's just protecting you, then that should be a personal choice that that family make.
Agreed. You know, but it's just like any vaccine, it's not 100%. So.
Yeah, I think what the other ones, you know, you've already that like that ship has kind of sailed. I think it's just focusing on do you want to add this one into that list or into that group?
Maybe three or four years down the road.
Well, I think from most of the parents I've heard from that are resistant to a mandate, that's what they're saying is just give us more time to consider it. It's it's you know, parents I've talked to have told me, you know, their 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 kids have had all the other mandatory vaccines. They understand the value of those. But for a lot of parents, you know, COVID is not the existential threat to them and their children that something like like polio or the measles or the chickenpox is. And so they're saying, you know, it's 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 not the same. And they don't see it as the same. And so they, you know, again, they want more time to see the effects of it. And I understand that, you know, because again, you know, it's 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 government's job to provide you the opportunity for it. It's not their job to force it on.
Absolutely.
Well, I think what you're not saying, though, is how they legislate it is not really up to us. The other, we didn't get a decision making in the other vaccine mandates, and we truly don't have a say in how this one gets mandated. It's truly up to the how they write the law. And if anything, this community has suffered more deaths from COVID than the city of Folsom, which has a much higher population. Yeah, I mean, nobody's mentioning this very high mortality rate. Choice is is a good thing, but when it comes to, we've lost so many people in this community to COVID. We haven't lost people from those other diseases because of the vaccine mandates out there. We're not seeing people die from polio anymore. And yes, the vaccine is not perfect. Breakthrough cases are occurring, but the people that are dying are predominantly unvaccinated.
And I think that's where we can provide education about the vaccine and it ultimately has to be the person's choice if they want that protection or if if they feel that it will give protection.
It is their choice, but what the legislators do and what they pass, it it isn't really up to us.
Well, but I think we can use our voices if we choose to speak to the legislatures, you know, that's they're there because we voted them in. And so they're supposed to be looking at their constituents and what they're asking for. And you know, I again, I just think it's a slippery slope if we're going to keep kids out of public school over a vaccine that are we going to require them to get booster every year? Because if we're not going to require that, we're just going to make them get it once to attend public school, then why make them get it once?
It's a fluid situation.
It is very dynamic, and I think that's the challenge to it. You know, you have longitudinal data that that shows the efficacy of polio vaccines, of chickenpox vaccines. And so it's very easy for a parent, you know, if they're even on the fence about whether or not to do that. There's there's an abundance of information for them to be able to look at that and 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 make an informed decision. Even though it is, you know, but ultimately it is currently mandated, but they still have the option if they really wanted to push for a medical exemption. So if they really had those legitimate concerns, they have the information to do that. Again, what I'm hearing from parents is not that they're anti-vaccine, but that this one has come at them too fast. And they don't feel that they're comfortable with the amount of information and the misinformation that's out there, because obviously there's there's just as much misinformation about this, you know, about these vaccines than than there is good information. So it's it's very difficult for parents to filter through that. And so that's why they're they're telling us, or at least what I'm hearing is, you know, they need the time you know, to to get informed, and that's what they're asking. And at least if, you know, or at least for us, you know, by by request, by, you know, by submitting this resolution, what I'm saying is that these parents want more time, that if you really want to convince these parents to to accept this vaccine, then then what you need to do is convince them, not coerce them. And that's that's really, that's my issue. And at least that's based on the conversations I've had with members of the community. That's what I support. But you're right. Now, on the on the other side, I want to tell you, Casey, that, you know, that what I've read about, you know, the mRNA technology, it's amazing. And it shows, you know, great potential. You know, down the road for for affecting other things. So so, you know, it's 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 great. It's wonderful. And there's, you know, there's some there's, you know, there's, but but again, you know, for a lot of folks, it's really new. And it's and I think that's the thing that 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 parents are telling me is they want to see they want to see more. They just want more information. And I just think that that's, you know, that's their their, you know, their right as parents to ask for more information and that, you know, just to hold off on it, because we know that if the governor continues with his mandate right now, then then those two exemptions will still exist. And most parents, I think, are fine with that, because then it buys them the time to really analyze the situation and really look at it and say, okay. Yeah, I think, you know, maybe this is a good idea, or maybe not. But it buys them the time that they need. Once it becomes, you know, law or it gets added to the list, and then it's no longer a mandate, then then everything changes and there is no really no exemptions. And I think that frightens parents. You know, I don't think any parent wants to be backed into a corner and given an ultimatum. And I think that's that's just where, you know, at this point, leadership is failing if that's if that's what's happening.
Yeah, you guys have all brought up great points. I'm gonna say it's it's an argument that can go on for a long time. But my my personal opinion is I totally support our decision to, or hopefully do decide to do the personal belief exemption. Yeah, it's just for me, it's just that if a year ago, I would have been full for it, but after doing these vaccines, I'm fully vaccinated. I've had my booster. But that that was my choice. And I think everybody should you should have your choice for you yourself and parents for their kids. Yeah, for right now, I I'm full support of the of this personal belief exemption agenda item, so.
Okay. Any other, anybody else? Were you clicking on your thing, Grace, or?
Sorry, I'm having an issue, so I switched to a hotspot. No, okay, everyone's coming back. Sorry.
No, it's working.
Everybody, but.
Well.
All right.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 212.267. I hope I said that.
Wes, did you second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Wes seconded it. Tracy Tracy made the motion to approve item 212.267.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212267, seconded by Wesley Cagle. Tom Silva.
Aye.
Grace Malson.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
No.
Thank you. The motion passes 40, 4 As from Thomas Silva, A Grace Malson, A Tracy Skinner, A Wesley Cagle, and a no by Casey Raboy.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item now, which is 212.268. And that is Board Consideration of Approval to reopen Fairsite Elementary due to implementation of Universal Transitional Kindergarten, UTK, and establishment of new county district school, CDS code.
Thank you. Currently, our Fairsite Preschool and Readiness Center has classrooms for three and four-year-old preschool students. And the district has been planning how we're going to meet the state requirements for universal transitional kindergarten by 2025, which will mean that all four-year-olds will be able to attend TK by 2025. The district currently does not have the Kinder facility space to increase TK at all of our elementary schools. We could potentially have six to 10 TK classrooms by 2025, and we just do not have that space in the Kinder facilities at the elementary site. Although we do have space to grow a TK program at Fairsite. In order to do this, the board would need to take action to approve Fairsite to operate as an elementary school. Although our plans, it would be coded as an elementary school because we would be receiving ADA for TK students. The plan is only to have TK preschool and TK at at Fairsite. I would like to share some important factors that we've taken into consideration with this potential move. Currently, we have TKK combos at all of our elementary schools because we do not have enough TK students for straight TK at each school. And having TK at Fairsite would allow for a straight TK class and not combos. Our TK students would have a pure TK experience that is developmentally appropriate for four-year-olds if they were not in the combo class. Teachers would also be able to focus on just TK standards and curriculum instead of trying to teach both TK and Kinder. The Fairsite Readiness Center is also already set up to serve our families with our youngest children, our three and four-year-olds in the district. Fairsite is our oldest school in the district, although it really is only to about 10 years older than Valley Oaks Elementary School. And annually, all of our schools are inspected by certified facility inspectors. And I would like to refer to the inspection scores that are in your board packet. We do get questions sometimes about these scores, especially Fairsite because of the age of the school. I'd like to note that Fairsite, Valley Oaks, and McCaffrey all have scores in the 80s. And 80s is considered fair. So Fairsite, Valley, and McCaffrey all have relatively the same scores, a few few points from each other. And I also would like to point out the facility upgrades that we have made at Fairsite over the last few years. They're listed in your packet, but I would like to highlight some of them, and Kawaii is going to present a PowerPoint with you. I'm just going to list a few, and then we'll go through the PowerPoint. Thank you so much, Kawaii. Security fencing, surveillance cameras, new flooring, upgrading to HVAC systems. We've remodeled bathrooms and removed dilapidated bathrooms, repair of portable ramps. We have a new playground structure. We have sullered the asphalt on the playgrounds, and we have been, over the years, upgrading lighting in the classrooms. Some additional upgrades that we plan to continue between now and the summer of 2022, we will continue with new flooring. We do that and wooling in classrooms based on need. We'll continue to upgrade HVAC systems. There's three classrooms we've identified to upgrade between now and this summer. We'll continue with lighting upgrades. And we are going to upgrade one additional playground structure that needs it right now. I wanted to show a few pictures. Kawaii, thank you. Couple pictures of the things that we've highlighted. So we do have campus-wide security fencing, securely secure the school, just like all of our elementary sites and McCaffrey. This is just a couple more slides, a couple more pictures of the the fencing there. New picnic tables as well outside. This is a new playground structure. And then you can see that the playground, the asphalt is fairly new as well. We have a new maker space and steam room that has been created the last couple of years at Fairsite. One of those, one of the rooms that has been completely remodeled. And then bathrooms, a couple pictures of the student bathrooms that have been completely remodeled. Couple pictures of our our young ones, three-year-olds and four-year-olds. Thank you. So I wanted to open this up to board discussion and board questions related to our students attending Fairsite beginning next year.
So I have a twofold question. With some parent concerns with having to go to multiple schools in across the town elementary to TK. And so how is that going to be alleviated so parents aren't in that position? I actually think that's the only question I have.
Yes, we would be providing transportation for our families that that are on the east side if their home school is River Oaks, Marengo, or Lake Canyon. We would be providing transportation to get to Fairsite. There's also a potential of a small stagger time. Our elementary school started eight and our preschool, Donna, our preschool starts at eight currently as well.
Yes, it does.
And so we might look at a stagger time, maybe TK started 8:10, 8:15 if we need to due to traffic or due to transportation. The TK would be half day, so we do have some flexibility with start and end time because it will be a half-day program.
Thank you. I think that's all I have.
I have a I have a concern. I believe it was about two years ago, maybe three years ago now, we totally redid our school boundaries. So we'd have like make it so it'd be easier for our parents to send kids to their home school. And I've just, I have an issue like sending a kid, a four-year-old kid, five-year-old kid that lives over across the street from Lake Canyon to hop on a bus that came all the way across town. I have concerns about that because we tried to, we redid the 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 school boundaries to make it so we have the kids would have a home school. So I'm having reservations about this.
So of course, all of our students go to Fairsite for preschool, and we would still have a homeschool for Kinder through sixth grade. Most of the four-year-olds right now are already are attending Fairsite Preschool. Donna, I believe. Most of the four-year-olds right now are already are attending Fair Sight preschool. Donna, I believe we have fifty.
We have forty-eight are currently attending, and we have ten additional families that are on the waiting list for Fair Sight.
So we we already have almost fifty or over fifty of our TK students that will be eligible next year. They are already attending Fair Sight preschool.
So what's the total in the district or like preschool TK age?
Right.
This year?
Oh, go ahead, Donna.
Although this year, it's sixty students, and then we would increase it approximately by thirty students next year, thirty-five possibly. Do we have enough for if we if we had straight transitional kindergarten classrooms? That would be enough for just about three teachers. But we're projecting that we may need four teachers in transitional kindergarten next year. But we we serve so many of those. They're the oldest four-year-olds that in that are in transitional kindergarten now. We serve so many of those of those students in preschool that many of them would just be remaining at Fair Sight. I wanted to mention that we also, this parents start with the home visiting program, and we have playgroup at Fair Sight, and we offer a just a multitude of parenting education classes at Fair Sight also with a a school readiness center. So all of those services would be available. We also have a full inclusion program already established at Fair Sight for our special education students. And so those students would still continue at Fair Sight, fully included into the TK classroom.
So my next course would be this, the it would be opening up Fair Sight again as a full elementary school. So is there potential then to add first grade, second grade, third grade?
With the CDS, CD E code, you would be able to, yes, if at some point there is direction to expand more grade levels at Fair Sight, if we have the room, we could. But the plan right now is is really just TK. We're looking at how to expand the readiness center and how to serve the best needs of of the four-year-olds in the next couple of years. And we really just don't have the facility. We don't have the playground space. We don't have the kinder classroom space to grow TK at the elementary schools, at every elementary school.
So let me ask this. So the ratios, what, one to twenty, one, one teacher to twenty kids for TK?
Yes, but with the ratio.
No. So I know we don't have space at every school, but is it possible to have one, one, one school, whether it be River Oaks, Lake Canyon, or Marengo, that offers TK for the east side? And then, you know, the ones that are already in the preschool program, if they want to continue with the TK program at Fair Sight, they're already there and already used to being transported there. Because then you said you need three, three to four, so you could have three teachers, three classrooms at Fair Sight and one at one of the three elementary schools on the east side of town. Is that a possibility?
Sure, it's a possibility, but then you'd still be transporting TKs. If say it was at, say it was at River Oaks, and the student at the homeschool for the four-year-olds, Lake Canyon, we would have to transport from Lake Canyon to River Oaks, and then if if attending a homeschool was the concern, then they wouldn't be attending a homeschool.
Gotcha. I was thinking, you know, with parents, instead of having to drive across town, you know, yes, he might live across from Lake Canyon, but it's closer to drive to River Oaks and just drive all the way to Fair Sight. That was just.
No, it, yes, it is. It's an option.
So you said that you've had to combine TK with kinder classes. Can you can you talk to us about some of the challenges with that? And why it's not necessarily a a good idea to to have TK students in a kinder classroom, you know, at a site like like Lake Canyon or or Marengo?
Well, we we know, research shows, and we hear from our 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 teachers over the years, and it's always an issue. Combination classes are difficult, no matter what the grade level, and whenever possible, we try not to have combo classes at any grade level, although due to numbers, sometimes it's just we have to. There's a big difference between a four-year-old and a five-year-old. And there's a difference mainly that developmental need and the social, emotional, the fundamental development that we are supposed to be providing the play. The structure that we're supposed to provide in TK, oftentimes what we hear is parents tell us in the combos, they feel like sometimes the TK students get two years of kinder because they're not getting the true TK experience, and it's not the teacher's fault. They're doing the best they can to meet the needs of sometimes two different curriculums, two different standards. And so we feel that if we can have TK, straight TK classrooms, we would be able to serve the needs of our TK students better and kinder as well.
I have two children that have September, October birthdays, so they definitely fell into that TK category and attended TK, well, one at Lake Canyon, and the staff there is amazing with their kinder program. So she was quite fortunate to get to do it, you know, for two years. But I do see the challenges. As you said, Lewis, there are is a huge difference with a four-year-old and a five-year-old. And there seems to be just a handful of TKers, you know, mixing with the kinder. She did a in Fair Sight, and a lot of those TKers now would have just before, had the age not changed, they would have been at preschool for that year. Maybe done two years of preschool and then went on to kinder, and now we have TK. I do see the parents' concern about the driving, and when I had a student at Lake Canyon at Fair Sight and McCaffrey, it was hard, you know, to get around. I think the staggered start time would be awesome. I mean, if we had the facility space to do, you know, a TK campus on the east side, of course, that would help too. Um I think it all depends on the numbers and the facility, you know, that can house that. So I think there's a lot of options to look at, but I definitely support having TK at Fair Sight.
And I do want to say our TKK teachers have done an amazing job with the combos. But the reality is, in many cases, sometimes they have a class with four or five TKs, and the rest are kinder. And with the age, with the age expanding over the next couple of years, you could potentially have a brand-new, early, just four-year-old and a and a five-year-old. You can have almost a year and a half age difference between the students as the next, you know, the next few years, and I I think the teachers are really going to feel it even more when we're having younger four-year-olds in a kinder classroom.
You know, Lois, I just, oh, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 mine is mine was mainly about, um just to help parents out, I'm wondering because, you know, pre-COVID, students could regular students on the school campuses could get there thirty minutes before the beginning of the day. So they could get on campus at seven thirty. Are are we going to be able to accommodate the the drop-off times more? Because that would help parents out if they could drop their school-aged children off and then get their younger children over to Fair Sight.
We are, and we have a new funding. We have expanded learning funding that we will be able to offer more before-school and after-school programs next year. We are, we are looking at that. And another plus to this as well, we are going to have, with this funding, we will be able to have an after school, a before school, and after-school program at Fair Sight as well. We will have a coordinator that would run that program, so our TK students would be able to stay a full day if they needed it. TK would be a half-day program, but if they needed to stay at school for a full day, they would be able to.
Excellent. Speaking of findings, isn't there a certain amount of categorical funding that would come to a facility or would be provided for facility improvement under UTK?
Yes, the first round of funding is going to school districts that are eighty percent or higher frame reduced population or unduplicated population, and that's not us. And so we're not going to receive any funding this year. We could potentially receive some funding in the outer years. But yes, we would, we hope we will, and then we would just, we would continue to, if the board decides to have TK at Fair Sight, that would be wonderful to have the extra funds to continue to upgrade the classrooms and the facilities over there.
Excellent.
You know, I was just going to bring up one really quick point also with the each year, more and more of our four-year-olds are qualifying for the universal TK. It means that we have less, we'll have fewer four-year-old preschool classrooms. And but we still have our state preschool funding, so the focus is going to change. Currently, we focus our state preschool program on four-year-olds. We will, we will now, over the next few years, start really focusing our preschool program and state preschool on three-year-olds. So as the four-year-olds transition into the TK program, what we're going to need to do at Fair Sight is to really work on recruiting and and building it with three-year-olds so that we can maintain, you know, the student population there.
We're expecting that population to increase with the universal transitional kindergarten anyway, right?
Correct, we are. It will bring more students into our district with ADA, the students that used to qualify for our four-year-old program. So what we will need to do is start really building and and allow us to offer preschool to more three-year-olds in Galt, which we currently have a waiting list for.
What's the month cutoff, the birthday month cutoff for going to kindergarten?
September the first.
It's what, October?
September first. You need to turn five by September first.
Okay. Because I was just thinking with these parents with the saying that their kids are in the TK combo and then handed to kindergarten, but learning the same stuff. I, this is before, you know, the the month change, you know, my daughter was in two years of preschool, she's a September baby, started kinder at four because there was nothing else for her to do because TK didn't exist back then. So I guess in my mind, I'm wondering why, you know, if, you know, these kids are doing TK and then combos with with kinder, why aren't they just going into first grade if the parents so choose to want them to do that instead of like doing kindergarten twice? Just random thoughts, you know, but I understand with the age cutoff, it gets a little.
It is, but we we have an acceleration, and we typically have maybe one or two every year that do accelerate. But it's it's beyond just the academics. It's it's social, emotional. It's the developmental. So most of our TK students do stay in TK, and because it's with a credential teacher, TK students would still be able to, they will have individualized reading groups and reading instruction. Currently, we have four-year-olds at preschool, and we have students in TK that all move on to kinder in the same cohort. You know, part of them are have TK with a credential teacher and then partner with our preschool teachers. In the next few years, all of our four-year-olds will will be with credentialed transitional kindergarten teachers, and starting next year, it will be two adults for every ten students. So in a TK classroom, you'll have a teacher, an instructional assistant, or a partner teacher. So there'll be two adults in the classroom.
Amazing. No, I think TK is fabulous. I I wish it was around. Um, but ten years ago.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then, if not, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point two six eight?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Casey. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Raboy to approve item number two one two two six eight, seconded by Tom Silva. Grace Molson?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries by a vote of four to one with Thomas Silva, A, Grace Nelson, A, Tracy Skinner, A, Casey Raboy, A, and Wesley Cagle, no.
Okay, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is two one two point two six nine, and that is board consideration of resolution number ten, accepting final completion of contract for Greer Elementary HVAC upgrades and roof replacement, and that's SB James Construction Management Company.
Thank you. So the Greer Elementary School HVAC upgrades and roof replacement project has been substantially completed, and we are requesting board approval of resolution ten, notice of completion that would be submitted to the county. Construction services included replacement and repair of dry rot at the portable classrooms, exterior painting, replacement and or repair of roofs, replacement of sixteen HVAC units, all new HVAC controls, and a complete fire alarm replacement. The original contract amount was slightly over two point six million dollars. Due to the the addition of the fire alarm replacement, the final contract did increase by forty-four thousand, but we did stay under the the five percent mark, but we did due to some real needs there, we did decide to upgrade the complete fire alarm system. So the final contract amount was two million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-four. We use state facility funds for this that we received from the Facility Hardship Project. Marengo is how we funded that. SB James, he used to be a great partner for us. We appreciate all their work. They've done a great job at Greer.
Looks good when I drive by it. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the about this item? All right, if not, then I'll move to approve item two one two point two six nine. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Grace Nelson?
I think so.
Okay, okay. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number two one two two six nine, seconded by Grace Molson. Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next item on the agenda is two one two point two seven zero, and that is board consideration of approval of cooperative cooperative agreement between Galt Joint Union Elementary School District and Turning Point Community Programs.
Yes, I'm really excited to finally be able to bring this MOU, this contract to you. Um Turning Point Community Programs provides therapeutic behavioral services, mental health counseling, parenting education, just a range of services. And currently, they they are serving Sacramento County, and they serve families in Galt, but the nearest the nearest facility is in South Sacramento. We currently do not have mental health services in Galt. In the past, we had Visions Counseling. I remember it's probably been fifteen or twenty years, Visions used to be on-site at Fair Sight, and I believe at Greer. It then moved off-site. It had had an office in Galt, but in the recession, it closed. So now the nearest counseling for Medi-Cal and our families is in South Sacramento. What this would do is it would bring Turning Point Mental Health Services to Galt. Their main office would be at Fair Sight, and if Their main office would be at Fair Sight and it would be out in one of the portables. And so that would offer counseling to families at Fair Sight. But it would even go further than that. What it would do is they would have satellite offices at the school sites. So that if a family came to them for counseling and they had a child at McCaffrey or a child at Valley Oaks, they would go to that site to be able to meet with that student. So it would be less interruption in schooling. The only cost to the district would be that they would be using one of our classrooms. But really excited that it, this is the first time in, in quite a few years, since at least 2008 or 2009, that we will have counseling services for our children. Any questions? Wish we, you know, it's a start. It's a start. As you know, at Greer this year, Scolie has provided, had a grant and has provided us with one mental health clinician. But now this will be a second and we're hoping that this trend will continue so that we can, in the future, even bring more services to Galt.
That's awesome. Now more than ever, we need to address mental health issues within the schools and if the only thing it costs us is a classroom to provide this service and then they have the ability to outreach at every one of our campuses, that's, that sounds pretty awesome to me.
Yes, and like I said, it's Medi-Cal eligible families, but also they will provide any type of trauma-informed training to our staff and any type of professional development. It would be at an additional cost, but we would have the experts already here. You know, that would help to provide training to our staff. And they would also do parenting groups if we asked them to as well.
Okay, anybody else have anything to, to add to that or any other questions? If not, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.270?
I'll make a motion to approve item 212270.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Molson to approve item number 212270, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 212.271. And that is Board Consideration of Approval of the 2021-2022 School Accountability Report Card, SARC, for Lake Canyon Elementary, Marengo Ranch Elementary, River Oaks Elementary, Valley Oaks Elementary, Vernon E. Greer Elementary, and McCaffrey Middle School. So what are the highlights from these SARC? I have a few questions.
Well, you know what, I'll tell you, I want to lead off with, as our principals did a fabulous job of updating their portion of the SARC. But as you see in the board packet, I needed to highlight a few, a few different areas. First of all, by per ed code, we need, the schools need to have their SARC updated annually by February 1st. And a lot of changed in the SARC and the School Accountability Report Cards. Much of the data that you see comes from California Department of Education and we use a service that's called Doc Tracking. And so Doc Tracking imports the, the data from the, from CDE as it becomes available. With COVID, CDE, most of, most of the staff there are still working from home. And for one reason or another, we did not receive the data from CDE until last Monday. The principals had everything completed on their part. The data was received by CDE, but as Lois and I, we reviewed the, the data that was imported, there was just some, some things that I just needed to highlight for you. First of all, the CDE that populated the elementary average class size and class size distribution fields, it appears that the data that was imported from CDE, it does not appear correct. And I immediately reached out.
That was one of my questions.
I immediately called, I immediately called and I have an email to CDE. If I had more time, I think I could have corrected it myself. But because it's official data from the Department of Education, I'm waiting for an answer from them. I did correct the student services. Easy to know that we have counselors, library technicians. You know, I did update that part and I'm not sure, perhaps during COVID, there was, I'm not sure about the data for, but for the, the average class size. You'll also notice that the teacher credentialing data is still empty. CDE is suggesting board approval of the SARC without this data as, as an option. The data will be mailed and it'll be imported as soon as it's released from CDE. But we still have not gotten that data. The other part, you'll see there's a lot, is usually the SARC needs to show achievement data in the terms of our Sback, our state's testing results. We haven't not had state testing for two years. What Cleo and the, and the curriculum department did is they imported our measures of academic progress. They imported our MAP scores into the SARC for reading and math so that we did have academic progress to show for our students. They used for grade, at or above grade level in grades three through six, they determined it by students meeting or exceeding the 60th percentile. In seventh and eighth grade, grade level was determined by students meeting or exceeding the 70th percentile. So that data was provided to us by our curriculum department. The facility inspection tools, the FIT reports that Loa had, Lois had talked about earlier, they are in there, they were imported. We sent those to them. That was done in November 2021, which was nice because typically those FIT reports are almost a whole year old. But what's important to note about those FIT reports, they go directly to the district and to the site principals. And the site principals work with the maintenance and with their custodians and they are continually working on to repair all of those areas that were noted in the FIT reports. This year, three of five of our schools moved to the, the status from fair to good, which that's good news. And the last, the last item I did need to report is it does show that we had no suspensions last year. I believe it was one day before the last day of school, we did have one suspension at McCaffrey. However, it was not reported in that school year, so it will, will be reported this year. But it was one suspension, I think it was June 3rd or June 4th that it came in on. So I needed to, I needed to point that out to you. Are there any questions? I, I know it sounds like there's a lot of data that still needs to be updated, but the state, the timeline that they give us, they let us know that regardless of the data that, what they've gotten, that still, we have to have it. We have to have it submitted to the state by February 1st.
Yeah, I noticed a lot of data was missing, you know, simply because of COVID and that was understandable. You already spoke to the average class size issue. That just blew my mind. Because when you have a sixth grade that has a total population of 60 students, an average class size of 60 students and, and three classes of 33-plus students, the math just does not work. So, so whatever the, the issue there was, yeah, it would be nice, once they correct that information in that report, that would be really helpful. But yeah, that just kind of caught my attention.
Absolutely.
Regards to the FIT reports, though, there were two trends that kind of caught my attention that, you know, and I understand, we've talked about these before and then they're, they're really nitpicky, they're little details and, and so I understand that. But there was a couple of trends that, that caught my attention that, that I just want to know what we're doing to address it. At, at Lake Canyon, there was a lot of comments of stains on ceiling tiles, which generally means if your ceiling tiles have stains on them, that means your roof is leaking. And so I didn't see anything, but it didn't say anything under the, you know, under the section on the roof itself if that was an, you know, an ongoing issue. But for a school that's, what, 16, 17 years old, to have the, you know, that many comments on, on ceiling tiles having stains, I would, I would be concerned about what the underlying issue there is. So we, we may, we, we may need to take a good, you know, a good look at that roof. The other one that caught my attention in terms of trends was just, there was a lot of comments about electrical issues at, at Greer, I believe it was. And again, I understand sometimes they're just very minor comments. But it just kind of caught my attention that, you know, that, you know, electrical issues or something that, you know, they're always a safety issue. So that's, that, that was something that really, that really jumped out at me. And then, and then lastly, I think throughout all the schools, for whatever reason, there seems to be a lot of exhaust fans in, in restrooms that don't work. And especially in this time, you know, where, you know, with, 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 you know, COVID prevention and we're trying to, to make sure that there's enough, you know, ventilation and circulation going on. I was just concerned why it just seemed like so many of them don't work. So, so again, that was just, you know, those three issues in terms of, of the FIT report kind of jumped out at me. But, but I'm also aware too that, that a lot of times as a report is generated, maintenance is already working on resolving those issues. But I would like some kind of, you know, feedback from you guys if, you know, you can let us know if those issues, you know, have been addressed or being addressed. Because, you know, the ones are roofing issue, but the other two really, I think are, are health and safety issues. So, so they concern me.
Yes, you can look at that. As soon as we get these reports, we do review them with maintenance and custodians get a copy, school site principals get a copy as well. And, and we do, we've been making improvements over the years and we, sometimes, you know, I am kind of surprised about Lake Canyon, we haven't had any reports of leaks. We did have a leak at Lake Canyon in the Kinder Building that we had repaired a couple of years ago. I don't know if it's condensation from HVAC units, sometimes that stains ceiling tiles. So we'll have to look at that, but we will, we'll, again, maintenance already has these reports and, and they go through the site, so they.
They made that comment multiple times. I mean, I counted probably almost a dozen times where they mentioned that. So that's why it kind of jumped out at me. If it was just, you know, here or there, one, you know, one or two places, I don't think it, you know, I, I would have noticed it, but I saw it, you know, repeated. And that's why I started thinking, okay, you know, that's kind of the issue. If, if it's, if the ceiling is leaking, then the roof is probably leaking.
Yeah, well, we, I'll call up with maintenance on that.
Okay.
I wanted to let you know, the SARC are really a tool for our community also and they are posted on our website. Before we post these SARC, we will have the, we will have, make sure that we have the corrected data from, from CDE. And when we do have the teacher credentialing, the corrected data from, from CDE, we will reprint and we will bring them back to the board at least so that you have the corrected.
So they'll get reprinted and then you'll actually post the, the updated ones?
Yes, absolutely. We, we will not post the, the incorrect copy. But I do have to wait for CDE because that's their official. I mean, a lot of that, the data that you see in there, most of those data charts on student population, demographics, it all comes from CDE for every school district. So I do need to wait, but I do feel it's really.
Data Quest and, and that, and, and those different databases, that's CDA, CDE manages and maintains those, right? So once they fix it, then our SARC will get fixed.
Yeah, and a lot of the information comes from CalPads also and from what we report to them. So we know that we did not report that information. But I just think it's important to know that we will, we will make sure the public has the corrected SARC before we put it on our website and then we will also get those corrected ones to you as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got anything to add to that? Nobody else is nitpicky like me. I didn't even say anything about the water pressure on the fountains. Because it's either too high or too low. It's just never just right. Okay.
I did want to say thank you to our principals and assistant principals for doing a fabulous job with their part. Their information is accurate.
Thank you. Thank you. They look good. Any other questions, comments? Then do I have a motion to approve item 212.271?
I'll make the motion to approve 212.271.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wes Kegel to approve item number 212271, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Grace Molson?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now on to item 212.272 and that is Board Consideration of Approval of Tentative Agreement between Galt Joint Union Elementary School District and Galt Elementary Faculty Association, GEFA, regarding the 2021-2022 Article 18. Took me a second. Salary and related items. I'm not really up on my, on my Roman numerals, I guess.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, 18, I was right.
Yep, 18. So GEFA and the district, we have met through interest-based bargaining and we have come to an agreement on compensation and other related benefits for the 21-22 school year. And the agreement reflects a 3.5% ongoing salary schedule increase that would be retroactive to July 1st, 2021. And a 2% off the scheduled one-time payment retroactive to July 1st, 2021. And an increase to the district's monthly contribution to help benefits, the cap. There would be an increase from $635 to $700. And that would be effective February 1st, 2022. This agreement has been reviewed by the county, Sacramento County Office of Education, the fiscal team, and the public disclosure that they reviewed is attached for, for board review as well. But they have approved that the district can afford this salary increase. The fiscal impact is $787,000 of ongoing increase and then $405,000 in one-time payment using, we would use the in-person instructional grant funds to make that one-time payment. We do feel that this is fair and reasonable compensation for our teachers' union. We, we studied, we did very quite a few parity studies. We looked at similar districts, surrounding districts, and comparable districts to us, student population and student size. And we do feel that with the increase of the one-time funds that the district has received and with the, with the COLA that the district received this last year, we feel it is fair, we feel it's reasonable. Our teaching staff, our GEFA members, they, they definitely deserve a raise. Ongoing compensation as well and we do have county approval that we can afford this.
So any questions or comments on that? I know it's in the packet. I've already read it. I've looked at the numbers. Makes sense to me. All right, well, if there's no questions or comments on it, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.272?
I'll make a motion to approve 212.272.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Molson to approve item number 212272, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now on to item 212.273 and that is Board Consideration of Approval of the following Galt Joint Union Elementary School. of the following Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board Policies, BPs, and Administrative Regulations. And again, these are the ones we reviewed last month, correct?
Oops. Yes, they are.
All right. So is there anything new to add? Because we did the first reading last month. Everybody's comfortable with this? Okay, if so, then uh if there's no questions or comments, I'll move to approve item two one two point two seven three. Do I have a second?
All seconded.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number two one two point two seven three, seconded by Wesley Kegel. Grace Malsen.
Hi.
Tracy Skinner.
Hi.
Casey Raboy.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero unanimously.
Excellent. Now we'll move on to item two one two point two seven four. And that is a first reading of Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board Policies, BPs, and Administrative Regulations, ARs, one through six here. Um, what the significant changes should we be aware of here?
The significant change and the reason that we're bringing um all six of these for you is that on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, um, the Title IX regulations went and went under significant changes. And Title IX is in relation to sexual harassment. And because of the changes in the Title IX, um, all of these VPs and ARs are affect of affected by some of our board policies in this area had not been updated since two thousand eight. And even though our um uniform complaint procedures, that policy I was believed was updated in two thousand seventeen, I remember bringing it. It just brought a lot, um, a lot of changes. And in fact, um, the title, the number six, the Title IX Sexual Harassment Complaint Procedures. Part of that is that, um, we need a team, a Title IX team needs to go through, undergo a training. And on February third, we will have a team from the district that attends the Title IX training. And at that training, they will go over all of the new regulations, the definitions, the grievance process for sexual harassment, um, all the training requirements. And they'll go into detail on the compliance and regulations of sex, the new sexual harassment laws. So that's the reason that it's it, we we brought them all to a one-time under recommendation from um, uh, it is a really widely recognized um Title IX attorney that works with our county office of education.
Would it be possible to just show us a maybe just a quick, you know, uh, shot of the the webpage itself, where these where these are located so that if, you know, parents are wondering if they want to be able to go through and look at these policies, they know where they're at?
Oh, absolutely.
Just, you know, just 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 briefly showing them how that they could actually navigate to those, I think. You know, sometimes I've had feedback from members of the community that sometimes they can't always find things that they're looking for on the district website. So I think maybe that might be kind of helpful for the for next month.
A quick demonstration.
These policies are included in the agenda packet that's on the website, and typically there's a link for each policy.
Okay, but I mean, I'm just saying, if I was a parent in general, and I just wanted to look at all the policies. Um, I think sometimes there might be a challenge in knowing how to navigate to that. And so it's just just as we're updating these, you know, next month, if we could just kind of really quickly just show everybody like this is, you know, if you want to look at all of them, that's where it's at.
Right, I agree. That would, we can do that.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Um, we'll move on then from uh that to our next item, which is two one two point two seven five. And that is board consideration of approval of a revised twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar. And what is the occasion for the revision?
Yes, um, Juneteenth, National Independence Independence Day, June nineteenth became an official federal holiday on June nineteenth, twenty twenty one. And it is Recognizing Emancipation Day, Independence Day, Freedom Day. Currently, the twenty one, twenty two school year calendar does not have Juneteenth as as a holiday. And we would like to, we're proposing a revision to this, that it would be a holiday add this as a federal holiday and all schools and offices will be closed on Monday, June twentieth, twenty twenty two, when the, that is the observance day of this holiday for twenty twenty two. There is a fiscal impact for this of close to forty thousand dollars because it it will become a paid holiday for those that typically would work that day.
But it does occur after the end of the school year.
It does. So mainly the, it impacts um a paid holiday for mainly our classified employees that are twelve-month employees that do work all of all year, work twelve months.
Okay. That seems pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments on that one? If not, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point two seven five?
I'll make a motion to approve two one two point two seven five.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malsen to approve item number two one two point two seven five, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva.
Hi.
Tracy Skinner.
Hi.
Wes Kegel.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now on to item two one two point two seven six, and that's board consideration of approval of the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school calendar.
Yes, so in collaboration with GEFA or Teachers' Union in consultation with CSCA or Classified Union, we have, we are presenting to the board a twenty two, twenty three um calendar for the school year. It has been approved by GEFA. And the tentative calendar would have a start date of Thursday, August eleventh. We would have three professional development days throughout the school year. That is common, what we currently have the last few years. We would have two minimum days for progress monitoring, five minimum days for parent conferences. And then the end, the last day of school would be Wednesday, May thirty first. It's a very traditional calendar to what we're used to. We're just starting. Basically, we're starting a little bit earlier, but we're ending a little bit earlier. Instead of ending in June, we're actually ending in May.
How does this align with the high school district calendar?
Well, I'll have, I mean, Nicole or Cleo comment on that. I know we have to work with the high school district and and try to align as much as possible with professional development days or or certain holidays, but they know the high school calendar better than I do on that. Nicole worked on the calendar a lot the last couple of months with GEFA.
So the issue with the high school is that they approve three years worth of calendars at once. And they they put them on their website and then they they turn, it's somewhere in in the process of each year, they revise their calendar. And so if we were to try to keep up with the high school, we would be looking at a calendar that then would be revised six months later. And so it's, we do try to look at it, but we also know that they historically revised their calendar that they originally adopted. And so, you know, it 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 would just depend on if that was something that we really want to do is have to take a calendar back after we've adopted it to revise it to keep up with.
Oh, I was just curious with having the earlier start date. Is that?
Like, where did? That's, yeah, so that goes to my point is that they have a twenty two, twenty three calendar on their website right now. But they may, they they, you know, could revise it before the school year starts. So I'd have to look and see what my my papers are at the office. I'd have to look and see what they say their start date's going to be right now for next year. But know that that could potentially not be what the start date is. Cleo, do you have that calendar? I can look on the website. I mean.
Yeah, I'm looking for that right now, Nicole, to be able to answer.
I believe it's August eighth.
Is it?
Uh huh. I'm gonna think it's pretty close. Just from my son being in the high school, I think this calendar is pretty close. Because they started a whole week earlier than the elementary district did this year and they get out uh Memorial Day, before Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, the start date in time is is definitely more, it's closely aligned to the high school. They start August eighth. I'm not sure their end date, but I know they end in May.
Yes.
So they're, sorry if my face is close. I'm trying to read a very small calendar. They and they start the eighth and they end June first is what their current calendar that was approved in December of twenty. So, so who who knows if that, you know, they choose to revise that or not, but that's kind of been the trend is is going back and revising something on their calendar.
Have you shared our proposed calendar with them?
I don't know if that, I'm new, so I'm not sure if that's past practice. Um, we didn't necessarily this time. Uh, I didn't personally, so I'm not sure if that's something that we do as a district or 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 not.
We do. We share our calendars with with the high school. And I know, I believe, Nicole, if you have it up, I believe also the holidays are a summer holiday. But we will have two PD days, October tenth and the eleventh, and I believe they have those days off for the end of a end of a unit, not end of a unit.
Quarter break. Yes, they for their quarter break, yes. Currently, it's the tenth and the eleventh of October.
And those will be PD days for us, no students. So the high school students and elementary students will both have those days off. I believe our spring break is the same as well.
Yes.
So we have, there's a lot of similarities with this calendar in the high school.
All right. Well, especially as long as the spring break and the the fall breaks are synchronized, I think that's important to all parents in the districts, but especially parents that have children in both districts. So, yeah, I think the sooner that we 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 lean forward and and let them know what our schedule looks like. You know, then I, because we got two choices here, right? We either react or we act. And I think at least if we're if we're showing them what, you know, what we're doing, then maybe, you know, if they need to modify theirs slightly, they can.
Yeah, since they typically come back and revise anyway, because they do three years at once, it wouldn't be abnormal for them to revise, you know, the next, the coming year's calendar.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, holidays are normally the same, you know, Christmas or winter break, Thanksgiving, spring break. Um, the only thing is they have the quarter break in high school in, I think, March. And we only have like the one day, but it shouldn't make a difference.
Okay.
And that's, that's one of the things they have gone back and revised. They'll start it with a whole week off in March, and then we noticed that the last two years, they went back and revised it to just two days.
Yeah, it's just two days. But I'm pretty sure the older siblings will be happy. They have Monday with the younger ones.
They have their own day off.
Yes, they have bragging rights. Okay, any other questions or concerns about that? Everybody okay with this? This proposed calendar? If so, then do I have a motion to approve item two one two point two seven six?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Wes.
All second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number two one two point two seven six, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva.
Hi.
Grace Malsen.
Hi.
Tracy Skinner.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now we'll move on to item G, public comments. Um, how many requests for public comment do we have tonight?
I have two requests for public comment.
Okay, and we're able to patch them in, okay?
I believe so. Our first public comment is from Stevie Chote. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Um, hold on, just.
Hello, um, my last name is Choak.
Choak, I apologize. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Um, so I just wanted to say that um I'm very interested in the dual language program. Um, it's very interesting. I'm very excited for it. Um, my son's not quite old enough to be one of the first groups in there. He's only one right now, but um, I hope there's enough interest so that when he's old enough, he can join it too. Um, my daughter was in some other, uh, it wasn't dual language, but you know, proudly bilingual classes. Um, so we're very excited. Um, I'm also excited about TK being in Farisite. I think that that um, location is underutilized, so it's good to hear that Farisite will be brought back in to help alleviate TK elsewhere and to prepare for um the changes with um transitional kindergarten. Um, I do think that the facility does need updates. Um, I I don't think there's any hiding that, but um, so it'd be nice to see some updates, you know, with some of this funding that's coming in if possible. Um, also, I really enjoy and appreciate webinars um being added to the um uh meetings so that parents like me who have little ones and, you know, we can't be out all day in person to these meetings that could be three hours. Um, having the ability to comment and participate virtually is very important, and so I hope it continues in the future. Um, and then lastly, um, I do have to say I am disappointed um in the results of the uh COVID resolution. Um, I appreciate um Casey Ray Boy's commentary. I thought it was very uh relevant and important and crucial. Um, considering that this month I've had two notices of COVID exposure for my daughter's classroom. She's in second grade. Um, I know other classes and bus routes and lots of uh other um things have been affected by COVID um in terms of keeping our classes up. Um, especially concerning for me is special education. Those classes being closed really um highlights that COVID is an issue. Um, because those are the children that are very much at risk and um can have uh lifelong damage. If, you know, something happens, they are um an at-risk community. So, um, yeah, I was disappointed to see the results of that resolution. Um, otherwise, I really uh want to say thank you for all of our uh staff and um teachers. I know that a lot of teachers are having burnout as well as staff. So I I really like hearing when you guys um compliment the staff and our teachers so that we can keep them and have them know that they are appreciated during this time. Um, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Choak. Our next public comment is from Martha. Give us just a moment.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can. Go ahead, Martha.
Thank you. I just wanted to address a few things that I heard tonight. Um, it was said that Dr. Pan should be arguing the case for vaccines and advocating for them rather than pushing them onto people. And he has been, all infectious diseases experts on every level have been doing exactly that for over a year now. Volunteers have been gone door to door, trying to get people vaccinated. Unfortunately, as you guys also mentioned, there's a lot of misinformation out there. If people really looked into the vaccines and everything surrounding them, they would see that they really don't cause infertility and all the other crazy far-fetched things that are out there regarding it. Now, it was said that the vaccinated are still getting it and passing it. Yes, they are. This is because of the unvaccinated. This will not end until the majority of the population is vaccinated. This is why you don't hear of outbreaks like these, let alone deaths from the other vaccines that are mandated. Like hepatitis, meningitis, chickenpox. Did you know that when the chickenpox vaccine was recommended in the five to nine-year age group, there were only sixteen average deaths per year for that age range, five to nine. Right now with COVID, in October of twenty twenty one, when these stats were put out, there were an average of sixty-six deaths per year from COVID in kids five to eleven. We're talking almost ten times as much deaths in that age range. Now that number has gone way up, way up, because as you know, just recently in the last month, we've had a huge spike in pediatric cases and deaths. As you mentioned, we had a lot of kids and staff out in our district. We had anywhere from fifteen to twenty-two percent of our. We had anywhere from fifteen to twenty-two percent of our student and staff out at its peak. Now, when we do see more people vaccinated, all those absences, staff shortages, and all this chaos will go away. The virus will no longer have healthy hosts to keep growing and mutating in. And it will become a thing of the past like the chickenpox and measles. We don't hear of those outbreaks, and there's one reason why we don't hear about them. Now, I heard that they're not listening to their constituents, but they are. Has it occurred to you that they are looking to the constituents who are for it? Who, believe it or not, make up the majority? Even here in our little town with its outspoken opponents, they are the minority. I previously asked for a letter to be submitted to the governor and all those in charge asserting that there are indeed many here in our district that support the vaccine mandate, two hundred of which signed a petition. That was looked over and never addressed. Why only the concerns of the minority who oppose it are being addressed and not the concerns of those of us who support it, I don't know. I also was very disappointed with the previous resolution. I also thank Ms. Raboy for speaking up and looking out for the protection of all in our community. And I really look forward to this becoming a mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. That concludes public comment requests. Mr. Silva?
Alright, thank you very much. We'll move on to item H then, which is pending.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Fox, did we have one more? I still see, I think it was in the chat, and I still see that she might be on.
She is on, however, she said she did not want to make public comment. Um, but I can check. Ms. Brosert, if you would like to make comment, public comment, please let me know in the chat box.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss one. Okay, she's saying no. Okay.
Well, and that's fine. I appreciate you asking. I wouldn't want to miss anybody on public comment, so thank you for clarifying that. If that's the case, then public comment is closed, and we will move on to item H, which is pending agenda items, um, school district properties, district communications. I think that's still a, a big issue for us and in terms of, of, you know, how will we do that? Is there anything anybody else would like to add to pending agenda items? I think the cat behind Grace is trying to say something. Okay, alright. Well, if there's, alright, if there's no other further comments or questions, then this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.